From what I understand, they are a little smaller than the others on Riverside. And yet, and yet the way it is the same as all the others. So, uh, I think it's great. But I have a picture of it much smaller. Uh, so, which way? I don't want to be blocking this. They can come to their seats. You know, they're leasing, they're leasing to what, here? So, you're only 20%. Uh, I went to, like, the, really, I went to the factory. How it be a year ago? Uh, and, uh, the head of the developer opened that, he said, oh, you used to do this. Yeah, yeah. I was actually allowed. All right. I'm just going to press my sandwich. So, yeah. Are you a little more squirming? So, you have some with you? Um, I was, but the other, um, I was, um, okay. I'm always there, I guess, I had a whole, um, um, so. I was in San Francisco. I think it was, yeah. It wasn't that day. Why should we, um, say that? Yeah. He said, I wouldn't share it. Oh, you know, I just spent no G K. I had to keep it out of my eyes. He didn't get it. I've been working on it for years. Now, you gotta, it's motion. It's out. I'll start paying attention. I thought you were just saying, hey, you're good. He was like, yeah. Yeah, that was, yeah. My strategy was the squishy will, yes, though. It's like, I put my people, you know. The squishy will, yeah. And, uh, 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 cause I started, Carol today, you know. Have you started? Have you started? Is that what's happening? Oh, right. And this, for this, yeah. You have, actually, yeah. 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 It's, 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 it's probably good. Yeah. 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 Alrighty, Coach.
Councilman Davis? Did you lead the president's? Yes. We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, March the 4th, 2024. We'll have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley of Poseville Church, and after that, our Pledge Allegiance will be led by City Council Member Samuel Davis. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight and ask for your presence as the mayor and the city council conduct the business of Douglasville. Lord, that you give them the wisdom to make the decisions that are, are good for all of the people here, Lord. I ask that you help them in continuing to make this a wonderful place, and, Lord, I just ask blessings upon them and all of those that have come, and I just ask that you be with us, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, for leading us in the pledge, and Pastor Artley, we appreciate the prayer. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting. I am the mayor of the city of Douglasville, and this is a City Council Regular Meeting of Agenda Items, where official action will be taken tonight on those items that were discussed last Thursday at our Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from Citizens and Delegates Section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues and tell you how the meeting will run, and we'll just, after that, look at the agenda and follow the agenda. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you, you will see a warning, and if you deviate from that warning, a second deviation will result in you discontinuing to have the conversation, as we will turn your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speaker, speak from the audience, cheer or carry on a conversation when you're at the microphone and the podium. Please just direct all of your comments and concerns and issues to myself and council members. We're only required to accept public comments during the public hearings. If you have any cell phones or electronic devices, I ask that you please put those on silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. If you have any printed materials, please give those materials to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right, with the beautiful black and white on. She will make copies and disseminate that information to myself and council members. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us vote today. After that, if there is a portion where it's a public hearing, we have comments from citizens, there'll be 20 minutes for those who agree and are in favor of that item, and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Prior to coming to the podium, there is a blue speaker card that you should fill out outside on the desk. If you pick that card up, put your information, hand it to the city clerk, then you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to talk to us. This meeting is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. And please address all of your comments and concerns to the committee chairperson, if you're talking about a certain committee, but if not, you can address your concerns to myself and all the council members. Okay, those are all the instructions. There's a lot of talking. Hopefully, we're all on the same page, and we can get, take care of the citizens' business. So now, we will follow the agenda. There are paper copies outside, if you'd like to have a paper copy, and/or you can follow us on the screen for the electronic version. So now, we're down to announcements and presentations. I've already done the announcements. We do not have any presentations, so I'll move on with the next item, which is item number five, and it is an approval of the agenda. So I will open the floor for a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda for March 4th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second, moved by council member, moved by council member Estes, and second by council member Davis, to accept the regular agenda for tonight. All those in favor of this item being adopted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. These, the ayes have it. This agenda item is adopted. Now, we'll move on to item number six, minutes of the February 15th, 2024 Committee Meetings and Executive Session, Legislative Work Session, and the minutes from February 19th, 2024, which is also Committee Meetings, Executive Session, and Regular Meeting. So open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. We have a repeat. So, we have a motion, and second to approve the minutes that are named here for the days of February 15th and 19th, 2024. Do we have any corrections, concerns, any deletions, or anything that the elected body sees about the minutes? I don't see any corrections. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero five five is unanimously approved. Now, we will move on to Economic Development Committee, and the vice chair is Council Member Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in economic development.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight. Item A, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for consulting services with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC for professional design services for Fowler Field Park improvements in the amount of $69,950. And Mr. Bass, I know you presented the other night. Do you have any new information, other than what you presented the other night, about this item?
Yes, sir. Chris Bass, 8830 Gully Road, Parks Recreation Director. No, sir, I do not have any new information outside of what was presented on Thursday night.
Okay. Any of the council members that were unable to be here Thursday night, do you have any questions about this item before we make a motion?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bass. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 24 dash zero four five.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had dueling seconds. Who do we get? City clerk? Mr. Estes? Okay, it's been properly moved in second to approve item 24 dash zero four five. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments from council members? I'm excited about this Fowler Field. It's gonna be great. Yes, sir. Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving item 24 dash zero four five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item A is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Item B.
Mm-hmm.
Authorize the mayor to sign a professional architectural services proposal with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC for a programming and planning study for the existing Douglasville City Hall, and Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. I have no new information to present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We had several comments, a little bit of discussion about this Thursday night. Any council members have anything tonight to add to this or ask about it, this item? No? All right, thank you. With that being said, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 24 dash zero four six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We had dueling seconds again. Who do we have? Miss clerk?
Ms. Hudson.
Oh, Ms. Hudson. Okay, great. So it's been properly moved, moved by the chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Hudson, to approve item 24 dash zero four six. Do we have any comments, concerns, or questions? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero four six is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item C, authorize the mayor to sign addendum number two to master services agreement number 19712 with MCCI LLC for historical scanning of community development records in the amount of $65,745.89, and Ms. Reed will handle this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shaila Reed, 6695 Church Street, Community Development Director. We have no updates from Thursday, but open for any questions you may have.
What I understand, what we discussed the other night, this was not the low bid, but it was a solid bid in the middle, and they were the most responsive.
That is correct.
To the staff questions. Any, any questions or comments from anyone?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'm going to make a motion to approve item 24 dash zero five zero.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 24 dash zero five zero. Do we have any concerns, comments, or questions from council members? We're gonna get all those papers and have it electronically done, which is gonna be more efficient. So, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero four, zero five zero is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item D, authorize the mayor to sign the contract of auction agreement with RJO Auction Company for auction services to take place on March 30th, 2024. Mr. Roberts will handle this, as he did the other night.
Good evening, the mayor and council. This is basically an agreement to allow RJO Auction Company to sell 12 of our public works vehicles, and we just need to create some room at our new yard as we build that additional facility over there. So we have some, this equipment has been identified that needs to move on down the road. Literally.
We take the vehicles to them, they auction them, they get 10%.
That's right.
We get the rest.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 24 dash zero five three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 24 dash zero five three. Do we have any concerns, comments, questions, excitement about getting some money from these equipment for our recycling center? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero five three is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our last item under finance tonight is item E, authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Safe Built Georgia LLC for building inspection services in the amount not to exceed $50,000 annually, and Ms. Reed will handle this.
Yes, sir. There are no additional updates from this item, but just a reminder, this is an asked needed service. Would not be a daily function.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Ms. Reed. Any questions or comment from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, just to, just to reiterate what Ms. Reed has said, that we need some more support for building inspections, that we have, we have this contract for someone to come and help us with our building as we continue to grow in the city, and it's just as a need basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve item 24 dash zero six three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 24 dash zero six three. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns from council members about this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero six three is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had tonight under finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and we thank our staff, Ms. Reed, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Jackson, and Director Bass for supporting us in this. We'll move on then to item number nine, Housing and Community Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight for the Housing and Community Affairs Committee.
Okay, if you'd just keep your microphone off for me, please.
Sure, I'll just go through the next several. We also have no business under Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee and the Personnel and Organization Committees tonight.
Thank you. That's why I had you handle them, because you're so efficient. Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Estes. I appreciate that. So we'll move on then to item number 12, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have a couple of items this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
The first is item number 24 dash four zero nine, and that is to consider whether to accept the petition of Mr. Patel to annex 1.529 acres of land located on Lee Road in the southern edge, oh, sorry, I got it pop up here, in the southern edge of I-20 in landlot 719, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 07191820002, and 07191820016, in Douglas County, Georgia, into the city limits of the city of Douglasville, and Ms. Shaila Reed is here to talk to us about this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. As mentioned on Thursday, this is requesting to accept the application. Staff has not received the application as of yet, so we're asking permission to receive it, to process it through.
Okay. And I just wanted to, as you said, that that is just to accept the application, so then it would run through the process of going to our other bodies of government here in the community before it would actually come back to us for a vote to actually annex it. And if we follow that process and then it comes back to us, are there any implications if we choose then not to annex it? Like, like if we go through those, through that process, is there any issue? Would it be harmful to us at all if then we did not vote to annex it?
No, your, your hold to any, all that legal answer that I prefer actually they answer.
Annexations are totally optional.
Okay.
Required to approve an annexation simply because you accepted the application.
Okay, and it wouldn't affect the neighboring zoning at all without then having also a zoning hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am, unless you annex it, you can't rezone.
Well, no, I'm saying if, if we go through the process, we wouldn't be held to any obligation to rezone anything, correct?
Well, I'm not sure what zoning will be started in the application. If you don't accept, if you don't annex it, you don't have to rezone anything.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Council, did you guys have any? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I was gonna ask Director Reed to just explain the proximity for the application, that it's near the city. It's, I mean, it's right there, those, is this the one with the parcel right next door?
This is the one that has the apartment complex on Lee, yes, ma'am, that has the apartment complex that will be fronting Lee Road, the development, and so they're using a piece of the parcel that has the apartment complex. They're gonna take a piece of that, extract it from that parcel, and create it into one large parcel with the commercial structure, and then rezone those parcels altogether. So the annex piece, as well as the portion that's in the city already.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just making that clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Were there any other questions of council? No? Okay. Well, with that being said, then, I'll make a motion then that we approve item number 24 dash zero four nine.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved by the chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Councilmember Davis, to approve item 24 dash zero four nine. We have had some discussion, but do we have any other concerns, issues, or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero four nine is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Okay, and then we do have one more item, and that is item number two-four dash zero five two.
Mm-hmm.
Oops. And that is to authorize staff to make an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Community Development Assistance Program for a land use development plan. Why do I have all these pop-ups tonight? Around Arbor Place Mall for the mayor to sign a letter of support for the application. And Ms. Shayla Reed's going to talk to us about this as well.
Thank you. As mentioned on Thursday, we're looking to request assistance from the Atlanta Regional Commission to give us direction on how we can envision the next steps for the mall. As mentioned, the mall is doing well, but we're looking to partner with them to assist them in doing even better. So the application is to give guidance on a regional level on how we can move the mall forward. So we're asking for support there by the mayor signing the letter.
Okay. And I know when we had a conversation about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and as far as the land that it covered, I think going up towards the old Walmart on Stewart Parkway, is that map still the same?
No, ma'am, it's been changed.
Okay.
The map that we have now, that's, let's see, it's attached, I believe, or is it not?
I just have a report.
It may not be attached, but the mall will be primarily just Douglas Boulevard, primarily. And it'd be all the surrounding parcels near the mall.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, did you have any questions of Ms. Reed? No. I think this is a very exciting item. So with that being said, then I make a motion that we approve item number two-four dash five zero two.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, that's a lot. It's a hard few seconds. Who do we get? Madam City Clerk? Ms. Hudson. Okay, it's been properly moved, moved by the chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Councilmember Hudson, to approve item twenty-four dash zero five two. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, questions from the council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero five two is unanimously approved. That's all you have, Madam Chairman? I know. Is that all you have?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all that we have this evening for Planning and Development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you to our staff member, Director Reed, for assisting us with those items. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening in public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I'll be in a sec this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee, the vice chair is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under public safety to hold a public hearing to consider a request for the alcoholic beverage license for the on-premise sale and consumption of wine and malt beverages and spirituous liquor at the following establishment. Proposed licensee Twisted P LLC, location eighteen fifty-one, Market Street, Suite one hundred. Proposed agent outlet manager, Mr. Anthony Wizard. The required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. And is Mr. Wizard here tonight? Mr. Wizard, go ahead and come forward, give your name and address like the other night for the record. And do you have anything else to add to what you presented to us the other night?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Nothing more to add. Anthony Wizard, eighteen twenty-five, Market Street, Suite one hundred, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three five.
Thank you, Mr. Wizard. And what we'll do tonight, we didn't do it Thursday night. We do it now on Mondays. We'll have a public hearing. So I'm going to, I guess, call to order a public hearing.
Open up the public hearing.
And invite anyone in the audience that would like to come down and speak either for or against this item tonight. And we have someone coming forward here, I think. When you come up, whoever comes forward, let's go ahead and start with whoever is for this item. If you're for this item, as you approach the podium, give your name and address for the record, and then go ahead. Yes, sir. And then we'll do anybody that's against, if there's anybody. Yes, sir.
Mr. Wizard, is it pea or pie?
Pie. Like, pizza pie.
I'm sorry.
Pizza pie. It's okay. I just want to make sure. Make me want to eat, you know, some food.
Hello. First, I'd like to say thank you all for your service, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. My name is Marcus Bathe, ninety-one sixty-one Dover Street, Lydia Springs, Georgia. I want to say this is a fine man right here. I support what he do. Every time I'm around, excuse me, every time I'm around, it's nothing but laughs and smiles. He got a good group of friends around him. I like to enjoy my family next to his family and his friends in this establishment. Outside of the fact that everything around us is just warehouses. So we need something of it in warehouses around us, because when we want to eat and have a drink, we got to go to the city of Douglasville, Atlanta, fifteen, twenty minutes. I get off work, I don't want to go that far. I want to ride down the street, see people laugh for a few minutes before I go home. So I'm here in support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else for this item, come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Keith Burnett, ninety-nine thirty-six, Barnsberry Road, Tributary, resident for seventeen years. To say, to say we've been anticipating and waiting for something like this is probably understated. I can tell you, I'd like to say I'd speak for all of Tributary for support of this item. Myself, I also support this item, so I appreciate your approval.
Thank you.
Been waiting since Oz pizza, huh?
Is there anyone else stepping forward to speak for, state, you're stepping for, you're speaking for this item, correct? Yes, sir. Your name and address.
My name is Raymond Diaz. I'm also a business owner in Douglasville, RJD Plumbing, it's LLC. And I live in Tributary, thirty-two ten Garden Hill Lane, and that's in Douglasville, three oh one three five. Been in Tributary about four years now, and I've known Anthony for maybe fifteen. And I've been waiting for him to open up a place of business where I can eat, bring my family to. And just so happens, it's going to be right next to my subdivision, so I can walk to there. And I'm supportive because we need something more like this in the community. So I'm for this twisted pie, you know.
What took you so long to come? You've been knowing him for fifteen years. You've just only been here four. Where you been?
Well.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Everyone has a journey.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for this item? Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us here. My name is Leo Godwin. I live at thirty-one thirty-nine Primrose Street, Douglasville. I'm a fellow Tributarian as well. I've been there for nine years, and I've been knowing Mr. Wizard here for about five years. He's a great man. And we've been looking forward to have a nice upscale business added to the neighborhood. And I really do think that it's going to continue to add value to our neighborhood and our city. So I'm definitely here to support that.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else speaking for this item? Anybody speaking against this item, please come forward at this time. As Councilman Davis would say, we have no takers, so we'll move on. We'll close this public hearing. And just, I know the council member from Tributary would like to say a word.
I would. Thank you, Coach. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Burnett said. I mean, you heard from several residents at Tributary, but everybody at Tributary has been waiting for this twisted pie to open for quite some time and is very excited. I, as I said on Thursday, I had a brief moment in there at a pre-opening event, and it's wonderful. The space is beautiful, the food is good. I'm sure the drinks will be good, even though they weren't there last week. So, you know, it's definitely needed in my ward. So welcome aboard, Tony. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir, Councilman Davis?
Yes, I wasn't here the other night that you all mentioned about hours of operation and service of.
Yes, but you can ask Mr. Wizard to be had.
Yes, sir. How are you going about training your staff on pouring, serving alcohol?
Okay, so as I was here Thursday and spoke of that, I was asked the same question. We're going to use the mantra or the acronym FLAG, which is, we're going to feel IDs, make sure. A fake ID usually is a little heavier or lighter than a normal state-issued license that we all have. The look of it, we can look at the ID and see if there's little marks on it that make it look different from a state-issued ID. Or, and we can look at the person, a person with a fake mustache, a person with a wig, or something like that. And then from there, we'll take the act of looking at the ID and so on. And then we'll give back the ID and let the person know. We don't have to serve anyone any alcohol, even if you are over twenty-one. If we think you're inebriated or something like that, we don't, we reserve the right to not serve you. So we'll take that as our training and go from there.
Hours of operation?
Right now, we're looking at from ten to two, ten in the morning to two in the afternoon. And then from there, four o'clock to ten o'clock at night.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And Councilman Davis, any other questions or comments? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to congratulate you on starting your own business, and thank you for choosing the city of Douglasville to start your business in, and I can't wait to try it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
To Councilman Davis's point, just, you know, and I appreciate what you said about how y'all are going to go about checking IDs and things like that. And I think some businesses sometimes get so comfortable with their customers. They maybe look like me with a bunch of white hair, and they don't worry about checking ID, but the ordinance says everybody gets checked, no matter how old you look. So I, and I appreciate that, you know. If somebody checks my ID, I, well, I don't mind that at all. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for your candor in that. Any, Councilman Estes, did you reach for your microphone a second ago?
No, I just want to call everybody off and say I'm going to second this.
Okay.
So leave him alone.
That, that was a shot across the bow, Ms. Hudson. All right, since the public hearing has been held and everybody's had their chance to comment, I would like to make a motion to approve item twenty-four dash zero three three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved by the chair, Councilmember, Vice Chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve item twenty-four dash zero thirty-three. We've had some conversation. Are there any more questions that someone has thought about as we've been talking? If not, then it's been properly moved in second to approve this item. All those in favor of approving item twenty-four dash zero three three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero thirty-three is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Mayor, that's all I had tonight under public safety.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I appreciate you taking that committee. And congratulations again and to Councilman Estes in Tributary area. We'll move on then to item number sixteen, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by you as well, Councilmember Watts.
Yes, ma'am. I have one item to appoint Tiffany Dixon to the Hotel Post Three, or, yeah, Hotel Three Post of the City of Douglasville's Convention and Visitors Bureau, CBB, Advisory Board for a two-year term, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything to add to what you said the other night? Go ahead.
Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. I have nothing new to add, just Ms. Dixon. I spoke with her over the weekend, and she's very excited to serve as appointed.
Well, I was, I got to be a part of that interview, and she'll be an asset on that board.
Oh, good.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-four dash zero five seven.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have Ms. Nicole Miller or Councilmember Elaine Hudson? Okay, Councilmember Hudson. It's been properly moved by the chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Hudson, to approve item twenty-four dash zero five seven. Do we have any concerns, questions, or comments outside of we're very excited and appreciate citizens giving of their time to serve on our boards and authorities. It's a blessing. Okay, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash zero five seven is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach Watts, and we appreciate staff support. Deputy City Manager, Jackson. We'll move on then. Councilmember Hudson, if you don't mind, take the next two committees for me, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time, and we have no new business under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So we'll move on now to other business. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected body? Okay, I don't see any. If not, then we'll move on to item number twenty, which is updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Attorney Dotson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Attorney Jordan. The police department, we have Stafford over there.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What? Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Wow, it's going to be a full moon. Okay, no business from the city manager. Comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, you're welcome to come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that has germane to the city of Douglasville. Do we have any takers? No? Mr. Harris, you're not coming? I thought you were coming. I was trying to give you time. No. Okay. Well, if we don't have any other business then to come before council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.